Okay, good evening, everyone. And welcome to the Town Meeting Info Session. We would just like to start tonight by saying that if, at any time during this information session, you have a question and you're on Zoom, you can either use the raise hand function, or you can put a question into chat, and we'll stop along the way and answer questions. Just so everybody knows, this is the first time that we're doing anything like this. And so, there might be some bumps in the road along the way, but this is really something that we hope that we can continue to do in the future, give information sessions for Town Meeting, because we think Town Meeting is so important, and we're always kind of hoping that we get a quorum at 7:05, at 7:10. And so, we're hoping that with more people understanding what Town Meeting is about and how we get to Town Meeting, that more people will join and participate. So, this evening, you can see, we have a number of people at the table. We have some agenda items, as you can see on the screen. The agenda items are up there. I'd like to just start by introducing everybody here that is at the table. Myself, Kate Welch, I'm the Town Moderator. To my right is Connor Reed, he's the Town Administrator. To his right is Dr. Alicia Cabral, she's the Superintendent of Schools. To her right is Wendy Nightingale, she's the Finance Director, the Town Accountant. And to her right, at the very end, is Andrea Starchewski, she's the Director of Finance for Easton Public Schools. And then, coming back to the center, to my left is Stephanie Danielson, she's the Director of Planning and Economic Development. To her left is Bob Stetson, the Chair of the Planning and Zoning Board. And around the corner, to his left, is Danielle Sicard, the Town Clerk. So, that introduces everybody here. So, we're going to start by talking about what is Town Meeting and how do voters participate? So, Town Meeting, as everybody should be aware, hopefully is aware, is...
Don't mind me, my remote died. Sorry. Throwing the first wrench in things of the evening. We'll figure it out.
We do have a screenshot of the next slide here that will come eventually. But anyway, Town Meeting is usually twice a year. Our annual Town Meeting is coming up, as everybody knows, next Monday, May 20. We start at 7:00 PM in the auditorium at Oliver Ames High School. In order for us to begin, or even have a Town Meeting, we need to have 100 people, a quorum of 100 people, 100 citizens, 100 voting citizens at Town Meeting. So, you come in about quarter to seven, 20 of seven, you check in, just like you would when you vote, you get a little orange card, you come in and sit down in the auditorium, we wait for a quorum, and then we start the meeting, generally using some rules and regulations of the meeting, because it's important for us to be orderly, and we follow Town Meeting Time, which is parliamentary rules of procedure. And although it's a little antiquated, it does keep everybody kind of under control and keeps the meeting moving along. As Town Moderator, I'm the individual who runs the Town Meeting and makes sure that it goes in an orderly fashion. We then go through each warrant, and if you've seen them before, somebody from the Select Board will get up and read the warrant, and then talk about the motion, then sometimes there are presentations and discussions, and then a vote. So, usually up on stage with me is the Town Clerk, Danielle Sicard. And Danielle is there, she has an extremely important role in taking the meetings, the notes, minutes for the meeting, and making sure that the vote is counted appropriately. She obviously keeps me in check to make sure that the vote is counted correctly. Sometimes, depending on what the warrant item is, or what the article is, sometimes it's just a majority vote, sometimes it's a two-thirds majority vote. So, it's important for the voters to follow the directions, use those orange cards, raise their hands high. And sometimes it comes to having to do a standing count when it comes to counting the votes. There are times when we've had to do a secret ballot. I'm going to turn that part over to Danielle, just so that you can hear from somebody else for five minutes instead of me. So, go ahead, Danielle.
If the moderator is unable to obtain a voice vote or a hand vote by looking at the cards, she then has the opportunity to call for either a counted vote, where we would have some other department heads or election workers who are sectioned off in all of the different stands in the auditorium, and would do the count. The moderator would ask those who were in favor to stand, and then those who were opposed to also stand, and then we would, as I said, proceed to counting them manually, to see if we can get the exact number to determine if the two-thirds has been met. On rare occasion, but occasionally, there's the opportunity that we would need to go to a secret vote. This is an open Town Meeting, so not all votes are like in a ballot on an election day. They generally are by show of hands and the cards, or a voice vote. But we do have a mechanism in place where we could go to a secret ballot vote. It is very time-consuming, but we have done it, and we have the procedures always in place for every Town Meeting, should we need it.
Right. And so, during the Town Meeting, while the articles are being presented, it's really important, obviously, for the voters to be able to participate. And attached to the warrant, this evening, attached to every warrant when you come into the Town Meeting, are the official procedures that are to be used at Town Meeting. You can see at the bottom of the screen, there's just kind of a snippet of the first two official procedures to be used at Town Meeting. Basically, they're motions. So, if there are certain motions that can be raised during the discussion, or as the discussion is ending or closing for an article, and they become extremely important. So, if you're wanting to come to Town Meeting, willing to come to Town Meeting, which we are encouraging everybody to do, we really, you know, hope that you just take a few minutes to read through the official procedures, as far as the motions go. As far as actual procedure, again, at the very beginning of the Town Meeting, I will explain to everybody how we kind of make it through Town Meeting effectively, efficiently, and quickly. So, let's see, is there anything else that you can think of, Danielle, that I'm missing?
No, I think, obviously, when we get to Town Meeting, the moderator does spend some time, and those are really important rules, for everybody to know, including when you're making a motion, being very clear and intentional in stating your name and address, so that, again, for the record, all motions need to be recorded, and I need to know who's made the motion.
So, unless there are any questions about the official procedures, in order to, I would say that if anybody, you know, wants to get caught up on what the warrant, the articles on the warrant are, and any more information on how to participate, you can look online on the Town of Easton website to see the warrant articles, if you can't see them or access them right now. And if you want to stay informed as to any other material as they develop, you can sign up for the Town Crier, you can sign up on social media. There are certainly a number of meetings that you can go to, if you're interested in accessing and listening to any particular issue that may end up coming up on the warrant, Select Board meetings, School Committee meetings, et cetera. If there's anything else about that, I think I'll turn it over to Sean, who I did not introduce, because I'm lame, and I'm sorry.
He was busy behind the airplane mode.
I'll introduce myself. I'm Sean Dugan, I'm the Assistant Town Administrator. And to pick up where Kate had left off, an important part of coming to Town Meeting informed is to be able to have the information, to be able to make those informed decisions. So, we use our website as a central point of communication, or like a central hub of information, I should say. So, eastonma.gov/TownMeeting. And we use that to post all the details that you would need to make an informed decision. So, that's the warrant. And that warrant iterates over time, starting months before Town Meeting begins, and we iterate every time there is an updated version of that. We also have all the budget documents that you would need, as the budget continues to iterate over the spring and winter months. We also have information about accessibility, if you have any, if you need an assistive listening device, or any other accommodations, there are options for us to be able to help you with that. And we list that in the warrant, but we also try to push that out, because we recognize that not everyone's perusing the warrant or the Town Meeting website. So, we also push that out through our social media, like Kate, the Town Moderator said, the Town Crier. But we also recognize that not everyone's digitally connected, so we also have posted copies of the warrant in town buildings, as well as, we mention these at open public meetings as well, so people can remember the important dates as we go through the process. And then, we also have physical signage around town to remind people of the important dates. And we try to push back, always back to the website, so, because that's where you find the breadth of information that you need to make those decisions. So, we try to use that as the central hub, and then connect people in a two-way form of communication, to get them to be as informed as possible before they make it to Town Meeting.
So, unless there are any questions, comments? No questions from the audience?
No.
Okay. So, we'll move on to the next point on the agenda, which is, what is the warrant? And who prepares the articles?
Sure. Thank you, Kate. So, Connor Reed, I'm the Town Administrator. One of my responsibilities is serving the Select Board. The Select Board, in an open Town Meeting form of government, are responsible for calling for Town Meeting and doing something that's called opening the warrant, which basically is just soliciting articles from boards, committees, departments, across the town and school, to submit items that will be acted on by the Town Meeting. So, although it's called a warrant, and the action items are articles, it's really, you could think of it as a business agenda, and the articles are just the items that are going to be acted on by the voters at Town Meeting. So, Town Meeting by Easton's Charter is held the third Monday of May at 7:00. And so, we really, in our office, back a lot of our work, basically immediately after the New Year, out from that charter date. And so, because Town Meeting is in May, it's very typical for us in January or February, at a public meeting, to have the Select Board vote to open the warrant, they have that discussion at a public meeting, they send information to the various boards and committee chairs, we rely on almost 200 citizen volunteers across our boards and committees. Many of those are ad hoc committees or advisory committees, but a lot of them are also regulatory and have significant legal authority on behalf of the town, like the Planning and Zoning Board, the Zoning Board of Appeals, Community Preservation Act Committee. So, we notify those folks that Town Meeting is coming, we give them a deadline to send their articles to my office, we pull that together, usually beginning in February. And so, as Sean touched on, under the law, we have to post a warrant, I think, seven days in advance of an annual Town Meeting. But we start publishing drafts of that document, usually two to three months ahead of any given Town Meeting. These are legal documents, are relatively dense, so although we could wait until seven days before, we don't really think that that's the right way to do it. And so, we make that available early, and the board, the Select Board, holds meetings, usually two per month, every month, and throughout winter and spring every year, they review the articles that have been submitted by those boards and committees. Warrants are finalized or closed by a vote of the Select Board, they're signed, and then they are posted with the Town Clerk, they are posted by constables around the Town of Easton, in various physical locations. They're also available in the town offices, the library, at Frothingham Hall. And you can tell I'm not reading my notes, because it actually says seven days before Town Meeting right in front of me, and I only got there now. So, that process must happen. No closer to annual Town Meeting than seven days, and for a special Town Meeting, two weeks ahead of time. So, Kate, anything?
We didn't really talk about special Town Meetings. So, special Town Meeting generally happens in November. It's not a strict date, like we have the annual Town Meeting, which is the third Monday in May, but the special Town Meeting is not something that we have to do every year. But in Easton, we generally have a special Town Meeting in November, right?
That's right, yes. And so, special Town Meetings are helpful, they allow us to finalize or make some, usually minor adjustments to the operating budget that was passed earlier that spring in May, because the town operates on a July to June fiscal year calendar, so does the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, but the state usually is not done with their budget by the time we are. And so, at minimum, there's usually some shifts in state revenues and state assessments that we want to adjust for by the time we get to Town Meeting in the fall. And that's a really important part of setting the tax rate. We occasionally have other special Town Meetings for kind of one-off, really significant projects, things like the Blanch Ames Elementary School, debt authorization of a police-fire-publicworks debt authorization, where you have voters making a decision about, you know, 75, 100, $150 million projects, that it would be pretty tough to fit the presentation and the debate for that within the agenda of your routine business. And so, sometimes you have a kind of a special one-off, extra special Town Meeting. So, thank you, Kate. So, what does Town Meeting decide, and what does it not decide? And this is something that comes up from time to time. And when we were thinking internally and talking with the moderator about having an information session, this is one of the things that we think is important, because if you aren't someone who watches municipal board meetings for fun, which very few people do, Town Meeting can be an intimidating format. It's great that you, as a voter, can show up and, you know, be part of that direct democratic process, but it can be intimidating if you've never gone. Most people, public speaking is right behind death, as things that we're the most afraid of. And so, going to something new, and standing up in front of, depending on what's on the warrant, 100 to 1,000 neighbors, and saying, "Can someone please give me a really quick rundown of what my responsibilities and rights are," is not usually how it would go. So, there are really important decisions that Town Meeting makes, and there is important decisions that the executive branch, so to speak, makes. And so, in Easton, in open Town Meeting form of government, if you're a registered voter, you're qualified to participate in Town Meeting, period. There's no kind of ifs, ands, or buts, and we hope people do participate. And so, all voters form the legislative branch. It's, I don't say this in a pejorative way, but you could think of it as Congress, right? And the executive branch duties are shared in Massachusetts towns, on the municipal and town side, between the Select Board, who is the chief elected board, it's a five-member board, elected directly by voters, and they appoint a Town Administrator to manage the day-to-day affairs, hiring, that type of thing. On the school side in Massachusetts, you have a very similar structure, where you have a five-member elected school committee and an appointed superintendent. And so, just like on, you know, kind of state or federal level, there are a separation of functions. And so, legislative bodies, including Town Meeting, make significant decisions as far as the appropriation of budgets, the authorization of the town to issue debt, the adoption of bylaws, which we'll touch on in the next slide, which have a pretty big impact on day-to-day life for the community, and the acceptance or not of certain state laws, you know, in order to do certain things. Think about bulk purchasing of electricity, which is a little bit more interesting than it sounds. Voters at Town Meeting need to accept a certain provision of state law in order for a town to do that. On the other side, you have executive functions, between the town and the schools, of hiring and organizing staff and departments, managing the funds that have been appropriated, administering bylaws and regulations that have been adopted, formulating policy, operations, and management of town and school departments. So, bylaws, which Town Meeting votes on, so bylaws have a really significant impact on daily life for residents, businesses, visitors in a community. The local government authority to adopt bylaws are limited by state and federal law and constitutions. You can't adopt, for instance, bylaws that would, you know, violate state law or the state constitution. And that's why, after every Town Meeting, any bylaws that are adopted or amended get sent for review through the Town Clerk's office, to the Attorney General of the Commonwealth, to ensure that all of those bylaws that voters have acted on are compliant with state law, compliant with the state constitution. That's also why, as we go through the iterative process in my office and with all of our other boards and committees, and the School Department, the warrant is routinely reviewed by legal counsel, so that we don't put ourselves or the voters in a situation where there's a bylaw in front of Town Meeting that won't withstand legal scrutiny of the Attorney General. So, there's a selection of bylaws up on screen, I won't read them word for word, but as you can see, they have a really, really meaningful impact on the community. That includes zoning, which we'll talk a little bit more about tonight, environmental policy, wetlands protection, stormwater management, historic districts, licensing for restaurants, rent control for mobile homes, public sewer and public water use, and health bylaws. So, these are policies that can have a really, really profound impact on what it's like to live in a community, which is part of why it's great when more people get involved and participate, because in the United States, the larger the office that the election is for, the higher the turnout typically. Although arguably, the larger those offices are, the more remote they are from what's happening on the street you live on. And so, we really like to see people coming and participating in their own community and in their own government. So, this seems duplicative, because we've never done this before, but it's not necessarily. So, preparing articles for the warrant is obviously a kind of administrative part of that we've talked about, but when you look at a warrant, which, again, if you're following along online, you can go to eastonma.us/TownMeeting, every article has the kind of legal text that will be read as a motion. It shows you who it was submitted by, which very, very regularly, what you will see is Select Board, Community Preservation Act Committee, Planning and Zoning Board, building committees, and myself. You have case-specific ones, where, for instance, if you're leaving civil service, you might have an article submitted by the Chief of Police, but the large majority come from those handful of boards and officers on screen. You'll then also see a more plain-spoken explanation about what an article actually would do. And so, we're going to, in the next few slides, invite a few of the other folks here to talk a bit about what their processes are, to pull together the actual content for Town Meeting, because one of the things that we hope the folks who are watching remotely come away from this from is an appreciation and understanding for the fact that Town Meeting is kind of, it's a big deal, it's a big night, but it is the final step in what is usually six to 12 months of public iterative process by a lot of boards and committees and departments. So, articles on a warrant can also come from a citizen petition, or any other department or board or committee with relevant jurisdictions. So, I noted, you might have one from the Police Department occasionally, other times, with something like a plastic bag bylaw, you might have something coming from a Green Communities Committee, or something of that nature. So, getting into what's on this year's warrant, so we actually have a relatively brief warrant for the annual Town Meeting this year, I think it's 17 or 18 articles. Every annual Town Meeting in particular, you're going to have, I would say, maybe a 30% to 50% of the articles are relatively routine. I don't want to call them housekeeping, because that makes it sound like they're not important. They are important. But certain items, for instance, accepting the annual reports is something Town Meeting does. We publish annual reports every year, that comes from every board and committee, but usually, that's not a controversial item, and because I've said that out loud now, it will be this year, but that's pretty routine. Establishing spending limits on revolving funds, that's every spring typically. Payment of prior fiscal year bills, you may have, you know, a bill, two bills, none, usually not a heavy lift. But at annual Town Meeting in particular, which is the third Monday in May, you usually can count on, at minimum, much larger items for consideration, including the annual operating budget, which impacts the entire town and school government, and the capital budgets, which impact the whole community, as well as usually a slate of Community Preservation Act projects, and zoning from the Planning and Zoning Board. And then, wow, this is a lot from me in a row. Who here wants to jump in and talk a little bit about that, before we touch on the budget? We're going to come to the CPA, and then MBTA zoning. I don't know, Kate, Danielle, anything to add?
No, I mean, the routine, I think you're describing it exactly as I would say, they are similar in nature and kind of go in the same order, until you get to some special ones. But there are some that are just housekeeping, like the revolving funds. Most of the time, we're not changing the limits on that, but the law does require that we vote to keep them every year. So, again, not that they're not important, but they are just regular and routine that the law requires us to do.
Anything?
Right, nothing to add?
Okay. So, talk a little bit about the budget, myself and the Superintendent briefly, and then we'll hand it over to Tom Broussard, who's the Chair of the Community Preservation Act Committee, and then Bob Stetson, the Director, I'm sorry, the Chair of the Planning and Zoning Board. So, one of the most important things that Town Meeting votes on is the operating budget. And the town runs on a fiscal year from July to June. The operating budget is a $109 million document that is published as part of a comprehensive book, that's actually available now, if you go to eastonma.us/budget. It accounts for every dollar of revenue coming in to the town, and whether that's from property tax, local permits, state revenue, and every dollar that is being expended through the town, through schools, through fixed costs, debt, other obligations. And so, there's really not ever a month of the year where we're not working on the budget. So, the budget starts in July, we have continuous monitoring of revenue and expenses throughout the year. Fall Town Meeting, as we touched on earlier, a special Town Meeting with Fall usually will make any final modest adjustments to the budget. Select Board and the assessors, who are another elected board of citizens in Easton, hold a hearing and set the tax rate, where they take the budget that was appropriated by Town Meeting that spring, and the value of property as of January, and they divvy out what those tax collections will be. Forecasting for the next fiscal year starts pretty much around Labor Day. We have a budget subcommittee that is composed of members of the School Committee, the Finance Committee, the Select Board, as well as myself, the Superintendent, and the Director of Finance for both the schools and for the town. We meet, we begin to start public conversations at public meetings about what kind of priorities do we see in the coming year, what challenges do we see coming, whether on the revenue side or on the expense side, and discuss strategies to mitigate those. Before the holidays, a budget instruction memo is sent from my office to all departments, give them a preliminary revenue forecast, and instructs them what type of budget we are requesting. It is almost always a level-service budget. Our recurring revenue doesn't grow enough that we can send instructions to folks to say, you know, if you had unlimited resources, or if you could build a budget from your programmatic needs backwards, rather than revenue forwards, what would you do? So, it is almost always an instruction to sending level-service budget to my office. We review that through the holidays, and then we publish publicly, based on the dates required in the charter. A preliminary budget for the Select Board has to be by March 1st of a given year, we usually target February. And concurrent with that, we also have a capital planning process that is going on with the Capital Planning Committee, where all the departments and the School Department submit what's called a five-year capital improvement program. Those requests are reviewed by the Capital Planning Committee, who is, again, a citizen committee, a public committee, the moderator has appointment, authority to Capital Planning Committee, as do, I believe, the Select Board. We review the operating budget and the capital budget, pretty much from February through May. The budget is revised continuously publicly, the schools have their own concurrent process that the Superintendent will touch on momentarily. And usually, our goal, although it can be made difficult, depending on revenue constraints or certain fixed costs that we're facing in a given year, our goal is typically to balance the budget by April. The Town Charter requires that there is at least one joint hearing on the coming year's budget with the Select Board and the Finance Committee in advance of Town Meeting. So, usually, that's towards the end of April. Those are very lengthy, they're super detailed, every single department in town comes and meets with the Select Board, the Finance Committee, the School Committee comes on the school's night with the Superintendent. And I think this year collectively, it was probably somewhere between seven and nine hours over two nights, going through every single line of a budget at public hearings. So, we do that process, so that you do have that hearing, and you have that vetting and public review of that level of detail, well in advance of getting to Town Meeting. So, that's usually in April, typically the School Committee is adopting and finalizing their budget in April as well. All of that gets put together in one package, and that is what the numbers are that voters at Town Meeting the third Monday in May adopt. And so, I'd invite the Superintendent just to talk a little bit, they have a concurrent process in the School Department, but they're an independent entity as far as putting their figures together, so.
Thank you. It is concurrent, and you will see some things that are similar, especially around the time of year. of year. The budget process for the School Department is completely collaborative. We use a distributed process. We start with our strategic plan. That's at the center of our chart. So we have a five-year strategic plan in Easton. The current five-year plan ends at the end of this school year. We've been spending all year with a consultant using the Planning for Success model that the Department of Education recommends for school districts for continuous improvement. We will be publishing and launching that in the next school year, starting in the fall. But the current iteration starts the drive for our budget process every year. As Town Administrator Reed said, this is easily a year-long process, but we start discussing it with staff about six months before the budget is actually adopted in Town Meeting in May. That starts around December, where we receive the first budget instructions from the Town Administrator's office. We then start to solicit staff input. Sometimes it's the December and January staff meetings. This year, it was the January and February staff meetings, where every school in the district spends two staff meetings with the entire staff reviewing the needs of the district based on the strategic plan. Where are we having, experiencing some achievement gaps for students? What resources and materials might we need, whether human resources or physical materials, in order to help our students get to where we're looking for their achievement to be? After those presentations, they come to a consensus on the priority. The principal then takes that list of priorities to what is called the cabinet. The cabinet is made up of all of the school district administrators and central office administration. That is an extremely important part of the process because we are a part of a bigger pool of funding. We're a part of a bigger family. And it's important to note that different schools at different levels, or even departments or grades within those schools, have different needs that are iterative across several years at a time. And so it is critical for us that all of our leaders know exactly what the needs are in the other schools as well as their own. The ebbs and flows of needs as far as curriculum, or resources, or a particular position in their building mean that in some cases, they need to understand that a priority may need to wait a year, or if it is going to go forward, they understand where it lies in the list of priorities for meeting our strategic goals. In February and March, or the end of February and the beginning of March, the executive team, which is the central office staffers, central office administrators, then take all of the presentations from the principals and the leaders at each school, and they look at the goals of the department, of the School Department as a whole, and how they can look at long-range funding for different priorities at the different schools. We then bring that prioritized list back to the school principals and present it to them for their input and feedback. And around March, they have the opportunity to bring it back to their staff and get any final feedback, tell them what our proposal is intended to be as we move forward in our public presentations. Those start at the end of March. They begin with some initial meetings, School Committee meetings, where we discuss different needs and priorities. Those items would have most likely been touched upon throughout the school year, as we are consistently updating the School Committee on our performance and our goals and what we're working toward long range. It then presents at a posted and published School Committee hearing, where that information is presented to the public, again, for feedback and questions. And then we present it also at a joint meeting of the Select Board and Finance Committee that Connor Reed just spoke about. And finally, at the Town Meeting is when that budget comes before the voters of the town as a bottom-line budget for hopefully being passed.
Great, thank you. So Sean, do we have any questions?
We do, but it's for the MBTA zoning, so.
Okay, we'll get there shortly. So I will move quickly through this. This is not a full presentation that we would make at Town Meeting, just some of the highlights. The budget articles are Article 6 and 7, that's the operating and the capital budget. So Fiscal 25, if any of the folks following along on Zoom, you know, read papers or follow along on the news, is a lot of really challenging cost pressures hitting municipalities and school districts around the Commonwealth this year that are making a decent amount of headlines. Additionally, federal financial assistance stemming from the COVID-19 pandemic is set to expire in Fiscal 25, and so you're seeing a lot of communities having some really, really tough budget cycles, and certainly not to downplay the budget process here in Easton. But I think it's worth highlighting that we have been able to, thanks to a lot of long-range planning and saving a significant amount of reserves for a rainy day, been able to put forward a balanced budget for Fiscal 25 that is not having to immediately resort to some of the more difficult choices that communities all around us are doing, including forced layoffs or overrides. So we are able to put a budget forward that does not rely on either of those things, and that's pretty good news, given the context of where the state is at. So there's really five key priorities in the budget, which again, the full budget book is available at easton MA.us/budget. It's to mitigate extraordinary fixed cost inflation. So just like folks have felt over the past few years at home, we are now starting to see the cumulative impacts of inflation across a lot of areas of our budget, including, most challengingly, some areas that we don't have immediate control over. That includes things like health insurance, transportation contractual services that are legally required of the schools, and insurance premiums for things like liability and property. Those put a real strain on our operating position. We are also working through the phasing out of COVID-19 financial grants from the federal government. We are stepping those programs down by using local reserves that we have built over the past seven years, from a balance of about $1.7 million to $7 million, or just shy of $7 million today. And we are doing this in order to minimize service cuts and program cuts and basically prepare for what will be some challenging budget years ahead. So I won't read through all the numbers up here on screen, but what you're looking at here is what our revenue looks like heading into Fiscal 25. The largest portion of the revenue for the Town of Easton has historically been and remains property tax. State aid is the second-largest part of that pie at 14%. One of the largest challenges we've had here in Easton historically, and this continues to be true, is that state aid, which is the second-largest part of our revenue, used to be closer to about 25% of our income annually, and that has consistently dropped over time because unlike going into 25 where you're seeing a roughly 3% increase, that's actually probably the best we've ever, ever, is not correct, we're the best in 15-plus years. We've received typically state aid increases to the Town of Easton, and the Easton Public Schools are closer to 1% or sub-1%, which is extremely challenging and kind of puts you behind day one when you start your next year. So that part of our revenue has shrunk historically from about a quarter to about 14% heading into next year. Local receipts are the next-largest category, that includes things like meals tax, ambulance receipts, building permits, excise taxes, things of that nature. Those continue to grow at a reasonably healthy clip on a percentage basis, but because that part of a pie is smaller, that's not really enough to offset the kind of chronic slow growth or cuts to state aid. And then we have a variety of other financing sources. That includes things like stabilization funds, things from trust funds and other uses. So we're looking at a general fund budget just shy of $100 million, 5.7% increase. Enterprise revenues are listed under there. Enterprise revenues are revenues from things like water bills, sewer bills, solid waste and recycling. The growth there is quite large as a percentage. That's largely attributable to two things. One is growing number of folks in the trash program, and the second is water rates increasing to offset the cost of PFOS treatment plants, which are now done. Again, I've read ahead of my own slides, so this is a summary of enterprise revenue. You're looking at a total enterprise budget just over $10 million, and the growth there really is water borrowing costs, which were previously authorized by Town Meetings over numerous successive years to build three PFOS treatment plants, which are now done, as well as growing users for trash and sewer. On the general fund side of our expenses, there is again, a substantially higher amount of detail in our budget documents that are online or in those hearings I referenced, but you could really break our general fund expenditures into fixed costs, town departments, and Easton Public Schools. And so you could see that the largest growth category there is fixed costs. Fixed costs include things like debt service, employee and retiree healthcare premiums, regional assessments, county assessments, state assessments. So while we get revenue from the state, that often is between, you know, 1% and 2%, we also get assessments from the state, things like charter school tuition that we have to pay out of that revenue before any of it can go to the Easton Public Schools or other costs in the town. Those usually do not increase by 1% to 3%, those usually increase far more, and so that reduces your net state revenue available. So this year, we had a particularly challenging year with health insurance. Those premiums grew by nearly 10%. Just for a frame of reference, our general fund operating budget is roughly $100 million. Health insurance premiums for active and retiree town and school employees is $10 million, and so that one cost area goes up by 10%. That's a $1 million increase right out of the gate, heading into a new fiscal year. So even if your general fund revenue is growing by 3%, 3.5%, you have 3, 3.5 million to work with. A million of that has effectively evaporated before you've even begun to look at any other section of that budget, from a fixed cost perspective, from a programmatic perspective, from a contractual perspective. And so years like this are particularly tough. We've had actually pretty good performance of our health insurance, with rates growing between 3% to 4% per year, which is far more manageable and quite a bit better than the market as a whole. You have then all the town departments, so that's Town Hall, Police, Fire, Public Works, General Fund, coming in at about 4.25%, and then the Easton Public Schools at 5.57%. So that's a really quick overview of Article 6. Article 7 is the capital budget. So as I mentioned in the kind of budget cycle and talking about process, we also concurrent to the operating budget, put together a capital program. So the capital article on the warrant this year is for $11,443,000. The very, very large majority of that, more than two-thirds of that, is water enterprise capital, again, relating to water capital, particularly PFOS. I'll come back to that. Some of the other priorities that are being funded in the $3.7 million general fund section of the capital budget are ongoing security system upgrades at the School Department, replacement of an ambulance, a shift command vehicle for the fire department, AEDs for all cruisers in the Police Department, cybersecurity improvements, some repairs at Rovingham Hall, and then in Public Works, vehicle fleet replacement, ADA transition planning, and dam repairs. But again, if you look at the pie graph here, which hopefully is not as neon-green on your screen as it is on mine, 68% of the entire capital article this year is for the Water Division. A couple million of that is for water main replacement as part of the Water Division's ongoing main replacement and repair program, which is great, but the largest part of the water capital is related to PFOS. So Easton has constructed roughly $12 million in PFOS treatment plants over the past few years to meet the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection drinking water standard, which is, and I'm only saying this because it's comparative to what I'm going to get to next, 20 parts per trillion. So we are now in compliance with that. That's great. The plants are up, they're operational. While we were also building a Red Mill Road water treatment plant, which was not for PFOS, it was for iron and manganese at Wells 3, 5, and 7, we oversized the physical building to basically future-proof it in the event that the US EPA, the federal government, kind of had a regulatory leapfrog where they enacted their own national drinking water standard that may be stricter than the one that we do meet for the state. And that is exactly what happened. Thankfully, voters at Town Meeting last year authorized funding for us to design PFOS filtration to go into this plant. So 5 million of that 7 million number is PFOS filtration for Red Mill Road to stay ahead of the federal regulation that will go into effect in 2029. Sorry, that was a mouthful. And I won't read line by line, that's in the budget book again, and there is a summary of this in the warrant. So I am very thankful to be through the budget slides, and I hope they were informative, and if anyone has questions, you can certainly put them in the Q and A or raise your hand. The next part of most Spring Town Meeting warrants that is really important to the community is Community Preservation Act funds. And so I believe we're going to turn over to the Chair of the CPA Committee, Tom Broussard, who's joining us virtually to cover this part of the presentation.
Thank you, Connor. Hopefully you folks can hear me well?
We can. Yep.
Excellent. Good to see you all. And you're spot on, Connor. I think your budget slides were great. They're an excellent lead-in to, I think, the value that the CPA can impart on the community and does impart. Back in 2000, the state of Massachusetts enacted the Community Preservation Act, and town residents back in 2001 were prescient enough to authorize and sign up for the Town of Easton to participate. And really, what the act does is it recognizes and acknowledges the importance that open space, recreation, affordable housing, and historic preservation play in our state, but more importantly, I think, to Easton, our town. I can't think of an act that more embodies the average values of Easton residents than this. We are a town rich in history. We certainly believe and have robust open space and a passion for recreation, and I believe we deeply value diversity, and in this case, economic diversity, due to support of affordable housing. The town residents supported that and continue to support this initiative with a 3% property tax surcharge. And the state, the financial incentive that the state act provides to cities and communities is a level of matching, and that level of matching does vary year to year, but to date for context, we have received from the state over $10 million worth of matching funds, which is a 45% average match of our $23 million surcharge that our residents have contributed. So for every dollar our residents contribute, the state has, on average, contributed 45 cents, which candidly makes an awful lot of projects affordable to the town with those matching funds. And it certainly brings to the forefront these types of projects that without these funds might not see the light of day. You just nicely went through the capital budget, and the capital budget, appropriately so, had some incredibly important components to it, to the police and the fire, the school security, the technology, the old pond, dam, vehicles and road repairs, building repairs, and those are all critical. And I know we have still a lengthy five-year capital budget requirement of $55 million, but this particular Community Preservation Act funding trust fund is separate from that, distinctly separate from that. And it enables the community to identify projects that are important to it. Obviously, it has to do with open space, recreation, affordable housing, and historic preservation, but our community has identified these components as critical to the essence and the values of who we are as a town. So with that, we can shift to the next slide, please. We, as a committee, meet each month on average throughout the year. We oversee a budget. This year, it's, I believe, just shy of $2.9 million, but I might be wrong on that. And we start in June, where we receive letters of interest. So if anybody in the community has a project that matches the definition and applicability of the Community Preservation Act, a letter of interest can be submitted. The deadline's June, and then what we do is work with those applicants to shepherd them through the process, developing a draft application and then a final application. And it's that final application that we submit for town warrant consideration. We submit to the Select Board for their recommendation and inclusion, the Finance Committee, and certainly the Community Preservation Committee votes as well. And it can certainly be submitted by a various group of civic-minded folks, groups, property owners, municipal organizations. So honestly, as you'll see on the next, on a slide to come, that the size of the projects range from small to large, but I would argue that the impact of each is very significant. And then, of course, we recommend them and we oversee them as we go through. Speaking to that dispersion of projects this year, you'll see they range from what might be a small dollar amount of just under $5,000 for the community garden improvements to a larger project, which is the Swift Memorial Park construction of just under $700,000. We value each. We value each of them. The small ones are usually brought by local residents, and we deeply value getting feedback directly from local residents on what they find important and valuable, just as we do the large ones. And as you can see, there's a full list that includes conservation property signage, affordable housing trust funding, historical society fire suppression system, and a smaller project at Keats Field for fencing for some of the softball fields.
Sure. I'll write that.
And thank you for that time, and pass it over to the MBTA Communities zoning discussion.
So full disclosure, I can't see the Q and A, so if anyone had questions about, oh, Sean's back. You can just pull that shot. Sorry, I don't know if there's questions on CPA in the Zoom, so we'll check on that and then we'll move into the last major piece of the What's on a Warrant, which is a brief presentation from Stephanie Danielson and Bob Stetson. Sean, do we have anything on CPA? Okay, awesome. Tom, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great. My name is Bob Stetson. I'm the Chair of the Planning and Zoning Board, and with Stephanie Danielson, the town's Planning Director, we're going to speak very briefly about the MBTA Communities Act and what we have proposed for a town meeting. The first item is what is this? Well, the law was passed in 2021 by the Mass Legislature, and it calls for a certain amount of by-right multifamily zoning in Easton and 170 other communities in Massachusetts. Based on Easton's status as an MBTA-adjacent community, the law calls for 50 acres of by-right zoning with a minimum of 15 units per acre and a total of 913 units. To put this in context, our proposal, which Stephanie is going to walk you through, covers about 65 acres. That is about 0.3% of the acres in Easton, so a very small amount of land. More importantly, this is a zoning requirement. It is not a building mandate. Based on the locations that have been selected, based on extensive community feedback that we're going to get into a little bit, it is actually quite unlikely that this act or these changes in zoning will result in significant new development. So if it's not a big deal, the question is often, well, why should we do it? And the reason that we should do it is because of the significant state funding that Easton has been a recipient of over the years and would lose out on being a recipient of if we're unable to comply with the state law. Over the past 10 years, just as an example, dating back to 2011, Easton has received about $6.1 million in essential state funding that we would forego if we are not able to comply with this law. So without further ado, Stephanie is going to explain our proposal.
Okay. So I'm leaving with this before we start talking about the process for zoning. Connor mentioned it a little bit, that, you know, there are laws and regulations that we need to follow, but just so that people understand what we're talking about in this instance, what's being proposed is a district that's comprised of three sub-districts. The first one is over, is identified as Foundry Eastman Street. This is located where Eastman Street becomes Eastman Street and the area off Robert Drive, and it includes parcel of land that most people will recognize as the housing for Avalon. That is multifamily housing that was constructed in 2017 and finalized in 2019 and is equivalent to 15 units per acre. The second district is the Belmont District, and that is the area on the right. The Foundry Eastman was on the left of the screen, on the far right, and that is located at the southeast corner of Washington and Belmont Street, and it includes an area that is just north of the industrial park. It's also located in proximity to the Queesit Commercial District. And then the final district is the North Washington area, and that is at the northern end of Washington Street, and the properties that are included there are primarily, are all located off Roach Brothers Way and includes the Roach Brothers Plaza. So Bob's going to talk about the public meeting process, and then I will talk more about the overall process that we need to go through to move zoning to town meeting and to approval, and then actually towards enactment.
Well, hopefully for those that are watching by Zoom, some of this is sounding familiar. And if it is, that's by design, because over the past 18 or so months, the community outreach about this law has been extensive, and the public feedback that we as a Planning and Zoning Board have received as part of this process has been critically important. It has actually been the most important part of this process, I would say. We've presented to every town board and subcommittee, I believe, at this point. We've held countless Planning Board meetings, public meetings. We've conducted countless grassroots presentations, which, you know, as you can see tonight, has continued to this day. As Stephanie will explain, based on all of this feedback, what you just saw on the last slide has been really sort of narrowed from what was originally being discussed and proposed as part of the Planning Board meetings to attempt to comply with this state law. We've really narrowed the proposed zoning districts to really just achieve compliance and not anything that's going to result in any kind of revolutionary changes here in Easton. And, you know, it's really important that, and it was really important to us throughout this planning process, that we heard the feedback from all of the citizens and residents that have participated in this process. And one of the biggest pieces of feedback that we've received is that we wanted to spread these districts throughout Easton, which we have done, and we wanted to make the by-right zoning as close to that 913 unit number as we possibly could, and we have achieved that with our proposal. Stephanie?
Okay. So how did we get to the end? Again, there's a legal process that we have to follow, and it starts with the, generally, with a thought that we need to amend the zoning for one purpose or another. Folks will recall that the town most recently adopted new zoning for the Furnace Village District, and that began by understanding that that's an area that was identified by the town for economic growth and new development. Infrastructure was put in place to support that growth, and the zoning needed to be modernized to encourage the type of development that the town envisioned there. So that was, that came from a planning process, it came from conversations the Planning Board had and the Select Board had. The MBTA zoning, in this case, really came from the state, a law that they had passed, and the Select Board agreeing that the town was going to move forward with this zoning amendment, and for the reasons that Bob just mentioned, that it was important to have access to the grant programs that have funded a lot of the underlying infrastructure and improvements that have supported new growth in the town, and also that there's really a housing need in Easton itself. So the first step in the process is the board discusses it, they decide generally what the zoning needs to look like and the concept of it. And once they do that, they vote to move forward. Then there's a public hearing process. There's a public notice that's published, it goes on posted agendas that this will be discussed, and public input is encouraged at that point. Additionally, when you're going through a zoning change of this size, usually of any size, you do some public outreach. In this case, this was a significant amendment, and as Bob mentioned, there were over 40 public hearings and meetings that were held to disseminate information about the zoning and also to receive feedback. Once that feedback, and it was actually an iterative process. As Bob mentioned, the zoning started off looking at eight potential locations for the district. That was narrowed down to three that were significantly larger than what was finally adopted, and based on the input that the board heard over time, they went through a couple of iterations before finalizing the district. And then the board needs to vote, and they vote to recommend that it move forward to town meeting. The Select Board also needs to vote, and they voted to recommend moving it forward to town meeting, as did the Finance Committee. And that is, that's kind of the process. There's a lot of sausage making in going through zoning amendments.
First, I have a question that you touched on a little bit, but if you could reiterate, what would happen if we go ahead and nail this?
In a nutshell, the town would lose access to millions of dollars in funding for infrastructure and future growth programs.
And if I could just emphasize, really, that the proposal on the table here was really the result of a collaborative process, and the three districts and the model that was selected, sort of just to comply, to do the minimum to comply, is something that was based on the community feedback. And the changes that we're proposing largely codify what already exists in these three separate districts that were selected. So as Stephanie mentioned, Avalon, it, there's really, it's largely codifying a by-right use that already exists there. On Belmont Street, which is, it's, there's a property across the street from Stone Hill, there is, again, largely a codification of what's already permitted there. It just makes it by right as opposed to through a special permit process. There is a little bit of flexibility and change out at the Roach Brothers Plaza, and that was by design because of the potential for the MBTA commuter rail line being extended out back there, which may make it financially feasible for someone to come in and redevelop that area, but I don't think we see that happening anytime soon. So I'm hopeful that everyone will see this proposal as quite reasonable and, you know, will help Easton join the vast majority of communities that have been faced with this state law and approve the zoning changes.
Yeah, Bob, if I could just jump in, I appreciate that last point for folks who are following along, and we really appreciate the, you know, handful of folks who came to the Zoom tonight for this information session. If you're following along in the local and regional press, you would think that town meeting season this year is about mass layoffs, overrides, and building mandates to put 10,000 houses on an acre of land. There has been a disproportionate amount of coverage given to a handful, fewer than 10, communities who have voted not to comply with the state law when we're nearing 60 who have. So I think it's important, you know, to provide that context. That doesn't mean that folks shouldn't be looking at this with critical eye towards, you know, how does this fit with their conception of Easton and where they live, but I think it's important to kind of repeatedly highlight that the large majority of communities, the mandate is you need to come up with your own version through your planning boards of your citizens that complies with the law, and it's, you know, it's a zoning mandate, it's not a building mandate. Most communities are doing the right thing and going along with it. And if I could just add to that question of what happens in Easton, there are some communities that have looked at this and perhaps they look at it and say, oh, it's cost benefit, you know what, mass works, housing choice. We don't need those grants. That is decidedly untrue in Easton. Not only have we been very successful receiving millions in these grants, you know, a $1 million grant in and of itself is a great thing to receive, but we don't treat a grant in Easton as, oh, we have $1 million, what project can we do? We often use it basically as seed money to capitalize a larger project that brings private investment, that brings substantial development, that brings future new tax revenue to sustain the existing town services folks rely on, the existing school services that folks rely on. And so to lose access to those programs would be devastating to the town's long-term capital planning capacity, to our long-term operating position. Just this year, going into the state's grant cycle, and the state, as folks watching this would want them to be, the state is, it has a very critical eye towards people asking for public grants, because, you know, I'm guilty of it more than anyone, grants are not free money. It's still public money, right? We still want to see that spent well, and so does the state, and so do the agencies that distribute these funds, and they look very closely at which communities are doing the right things, bare minimum there is complying with the law, which communities are doing a good job advancing priorities that are impacting all of us as a Commonwealth, like the housing shortage, and which communities have a record that when we trust them and provide them with, you know, this six-figure grant, this seven-figure grant, they deliver what it is they said they would do, and they use that to create more opportunities in their community. And Easton has that record, and we want to maintain that record and that reputation and that capacity so that we could continue doing a good job for the folks who live here today, and in the process, you know, create some zones where over time, you know, you can have some redevelopment to create some opportunities, not just for new residents, but also for existing families. Folks who may have a home that made sense for them when they had kids, you know, in the school system, who have gone on to amazing things because our schools are amazing, but aren't there anymore, and they want to downsize, there's not a lot of choices. So it's a very thoughtful proposal that the planning boards put together. I only went to a handful of those 40 meetings. A lot of citizens went and participated and gave their feedback, and I just, I guess, want to close with a plug for, we do stand to lose a lot if this is not adopted, and I am really appreciative of Bob's work, Stephanie's work, the Planning Board, and also all the citizens who came out to those 40 meetings to give feedback. It was really important to putting our best foot forward, so.
Are there any other questions on that issue? There are not. Okay. So what happens after town meeting? Since Danielle has left, Connor, I'll let you take the lead on it, because Danielle is primarily responsible for...
I usually sleep for three days straight and eat more than I should. What we really do after town meeting is we take the official record of a proceedings that the town clerk pulls together in four minutes, and we go through a variety of submittals to the Attorney General's Office for bylaws, I believe also for CPA articles.
No, CPA doesn't, zoning.
Okay, zoning, thank you. For town bylaws, for zoning, and those get reviewed over the course of the summer typically. The Attorney General's Office will then submit feedback to us, mostly usually saying these are good to go, your bylaws are retroactively in effect. And so we send what we need to, to the Attorney General. We publish the results of the minutes online of the meeting, online for folks who are curious, and then the budget goes into effect that coming July. So the operating budget that was voted on goes into effect, those programs for Community Preservation Act, those funds are available, capital funds, all that type of thing, and then the process starts all over again on July 1st. And I suppose the last part for us is if there's any questions, if anyone who stuck it out, we lost a handful of people, hopefully because their questions were answered, but if anyone has any questions about town meeting, the process, participating in it, anything we talked about tonight, we'll stick around for about one more minute, and if not, we'll Okay, well, I guess, Kate, do you want to give the last plug for when and where a town meeting is and where people can get information?
Sure, sure. So as that, the last slide tells us, there again, the annual town meeting is next Monday night, a week from tonight. Mark it on your calendars. 7:00 PM at the Oliver Ames High School Auditorium. Please try to get there a little bit early, so again, you can check in and sit down because...
Please try to get there a little bit early, so again, you can check in and sit down because we would really like to get started on time, because when we don't get started on time, it just doesn't, just doesn't start well. It'd be nice if we could get 100 people right on time, we can move through all of the articles and the warrant, and hopefully have a, a nice, successful town meeting and air out anybody's questions, concerns, comments as we go through. Okay, thank you.